Okay, guys.
Ron.
You're done on your end?
First on the...
End of the day.
First on the order is you have a copy of the Chicken and Bee Ordinance. Any questions, you would certainly address them to them to back or hand.
I guess I... I don't even know what brought this up.
Apparently she was receiving questions. People were calling with regard to how can they keep chickens, things of this nature. That there is a provision here regarding chickens, but it's exceptionally vague.
I mean, I guess I'm a little concerned. Your next door neighbor has chickens.
Right. Right, and then this ordinance is...
How are you gonna feel about that?
Poor bees and you're allergic to bees. I mean, I get why they're doing like I...
You're looking at it, are you?
Yes, sir.
My problem with the ordinance is they're not all roosters.
They're what?
And I think that's discriminatory.
Are you saying that one's a great face?
It's in the ordinance.
But this is not a gendered before.
It's not a gendered individual work. Why am I being a loud rooster?
Because they're very loud and they're disruptive. They attack people and kill them.
Is there some... Who polices the chickens to make sure that they're... I'm sorry. I don't mean who polices the chickens. I mean, who makes sure?
What happens when you respond to one?
To a chicken?
To a chicken. Or bee?
There were chickens up on Sylvan Avenue. There's chickens down on Raymond Avenue. And when there's complaints about them, it's... They're allowed.
See, chickens are... They're here. They're just trying to make sure that they're being kept according to best practices.
Oh, okay.
Somebody had to probably call and complain about it, I bet. I bet that's why.
I mean, the thing is, right now, they can do whatever they want to.
Right, so this ordinance has setbacks. Tells you it has to be in an enclosure so they can't get out. Has to be backyard. They have to comply with all the state laws relative to waste.
Agriculture and stuff, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. How do you contain the bees?
The bees are... The bees are gonna... The ordinance as it addresses bees makes sure that there's flight barriers in place to make sure that when bees are flying from point A to point B, they're above essentially the length, you know, head height of people. Because bees will fly, they hit a barrier, they go up until they go over the barrier, and they fly at that height until they reach where they want to be, which are flowers or water sources. And the ordinance requires that there's water on the property so that they're not going places where water, like your neighbor's pool. And then they're high enough to go over your yard until they get to the flowers.
Do you know this one?
I've got it answered. You're a Chicken and Bee expert now? I hear in law school that they teach you this.
I actually wrote law review articles on both keeping of bees and chickens.
Really?
Yeah.
You wrote law review articles?
Ghostwriter. My name wasn't on it. The dean of the law schools wasn't. But yes.
Interesting.
This is my first reading.
You were excited about this.
Hey, got to use something.
Okay.
Great.
And the rest is... They're hopeless to play.
We can try.
We can try. We have a gentleman that's moving from west... 12th West Harrison Avenue to 336 Miller Street. He's asked for the handicap sign to be removed from his street and a new one put on 336 Miller. He's already paid fees and we'll have the relentless council issue that will have a promotion on the 13th. Next one is promotion of public work supervisor to director position. We've talked about that. That will be on... Basically, what we're gonna do is June 1st, we'll start salary change, but the ordinance actually won't pass, the motion won't pass until the 13th.
We'll pass the motion retroactively, right?
Right. All right. The next Gibson-Thomas, they do their... This is the 2017 C2B application they do every year or so. It got skipped in 2016, but we didn't lose any money because the money we did apply for then is now laid on 2017. It doesn't even run on some odd that skipped and then kind of came along.
Speaking of Gibson-Thomas, I was telling Costa and Jerry and Jack, I was talking to Danny about this, he wants to have us up there for an open house. After Mark and Ed and it seems like before June's council meeting, they want to have us up there. 5:30. Still setting the time, so if everybody can attend that. Jerry's out and he's on vacation, so the more we have in time, the better, of course, but they'd love to have us up there.
Okay.
June 14th.
June 13th, isn't it?
Yeah.
June 13th?
Yeah.
June 13th, next meeting.
Next meeting.
Before the next meeting.
Before the meeting, they'll have us and then I think they're gonna come down to that meeting.
Oh, good.
Actually, somebody asked me to do it because there's a 5:30 seven resolution, the last one. I asked them to play.
Good, it's gonna work out.
Perfect.
You know, listen, I mean, I know we're gonna... They really want us to pass it before that, but we're not gonna.
So then they can have... I'll include that. I have to email Danny tonight, let him know that we are in agreement with him.
Okay.
All right, so that's a typical every year thing. We have requests from Park and Rec. We have $25,000 in the budget for Lincoln Trail. They're asking that it's not necessary for the completion of the trail package. They were asking if we would put that toward Third Ward Playground during our restoration project. And they are probably about $29,000 shy on what they would need for the project.
Is that $25,000 that we don't need for the Lincoln Trail?
Unless you use the... Yeah, unless you use it for the matching lights, yeah.
Yeah, well, we're... Yeah, oh.
What?
I mean, I'm not...
Why don't they use it for lights?
Well, here's what happened with the lights. We had a grant... We applied for a grant for $72,000 from PennDOT, and then we found out that we need a 20% match. And I was under the impression that we didn't have any money.
Well, we have $29,000, and I've been told that they didn't need it. Now, you know...
But they need... Well, I guess we have to decide, so... So we kind of missed that window on that grant anyways for this year.
No, we still... We still this way today.
The PennDOT grant, I thought we had to know by Wednesday.
Yeah, I talked to Chris and he said, "Well, really, the meeting got postponed." And actually, the meeting is five months from now, it's gonna be on this week.
So we need $14,000 of a matching grant to get the lights on Lincoln Trail, which I know we all think is pretty important. However...
It's eighteen.
Eighteen thousand. However, where do we get the $29,000 to finish?
Well, that's what I'm saying. They see the project, I mean, based on what I see from their numbers, unless they have other money coming in, what I can see that we're transferring over, there's still a $29,000 deficit for the Third Ward.
Even with the 25?
No, no, no. I'm not that. But, I mean, they may have other money coming in, I don't know. That's up to Craig, I don't know that. Once we... What was happening was this was money for the athletic field. Athletic field.
This is $27,000 of 7451, it always comes up. Athletic Field Fund.
I'm sorry. Yeah, that's the 27... The Athletic Field.
Athletic Field Fund.
Yeah. This was money we would earmark for Athletic Field.
Yeah, 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 I'm sorry. I forgot I put this together. Basically, you see, the 27 is what's in there right now. Some of that is matching money you've gotta have. You can't spend it because you're gonna have to match. So what's allowed right now is the 17,000. But they're gonna need another $29,000 to get the rest of the match and then complete all the projects. Unless they have more money coming in, $10,000.
What's the breakdown so far of city to school districts and study to school district property?
Well, the city's contributed 10 initially, which was for the athletic field now, it's one of the third awards, and the schools put in 15. And then there's 11, that's the Park and Rec's match, which was the teardown of the... Teardown, we helped a little bit with the boxes, but I'm not counting that. Basically, 11 is their portion of the concrete getting torn down, pavilion, preparing properly.
I mean, I guess the question is really, is it even our money to decide what we need to do with? Because, you know, I mean, if the school district gave... That $25,000 you're talking about?
Is in our budget. It's our budgeted amount to go to Lincoln Trail.
It's our budgeted amount to go to Lincoln Trail?
Yeah, it's in... It was in our capital.
Okay. So that wasn't the 10,000 from us and the 15,000?
No, we've already given the 10, and we've already given the amount... I think originally it was 25 to Lincoln Trail? 25 or 30, whatever it was.
I don't remember.
Not just giving a lot of it. It's been... Yeah, it gets confusing with all the different grants, but originally, there was money that was given to Lincoln Trail along with the other contributors. This 25 was set aside because we thought they would need it, and it wasn't in the budget. But as it turned out, I've been told they don't need it.
For Lincoln Trail?
For Lincoln Trail.
So they want us to give it to them for...
For Third Ward.
How can they say they don't need it if we still need lights there?
Right.
Well, I think what they're talking about doing is forestalling it.
Yeah, they were gonna try to find the 14,000 for a year. I didn't realize this 25 was sitting out there.
Yeah, that's in the budget. It was... We never really... I mean, it's interesting what we talked about. We got it sitting there, it wasn't being used, it was, you know...
I talked to Joe Tracca, he was looking to see if he could help us with the light money. I haven't heard back from him, but he said...
He stopped him off on Friday, and it was late on Friday. And he said that he's unable to help now, but he says going forward, he hopes he could help us with some other projects. And he made a good point, and it's something that I'm gonna make sure we do, to keep them aware of all the grants that we applied for, because he's the one that helped us with the facade grants.
Right.
That facade grant was not going through, except that Joe pushed and we have to get it.
Right.
What are they doing actually of what Third Ward?
They're completely rebuilding it. I mean, they're just completely, you know, taking all the old stuff out and putting the new stuff up.
Yeah. They've got $41,000 more worth of playgrounds. I don't know if they're gonna really...
Which wasn't originally gonna go to Athletic Field.
Right. And that was paid more out of the original grant, but...
Well, I don't know. I mean, Third Ward moved to, you know, Kansas, I don't know.
I think we need the lay grow, if he can go ahead and go for this grant, it's still open?
Yeah, I recorded Chris though, uh, last night, or on Friday, I talked to him Thursday Friday. And he said that the meeting, they were basically rediscuss that next week, so we couldn't... And I said to him, "We get back here on..." What's the latest? He said Tuesday would be all right, so...
Did they approach the school board and ask them for any money, or just...
Oh, I don't know.
I don't know. I don't think so. I mean, they had enough money, from what I understand. I thought they had enough money for what they were doing in Athletic Field, with everybody's contributions, but I don't know if they're doing more at Third Ward or what.
I think they are, I think the grant's larger. I mean, the grant's larger than the matching one. But I... Yeah, I don't... That I don't know. But again, maybe they have some other money coming in on all that there.
Well, if they need... If they ask for that 25 to be reallocated to Third Ward, I guess is they need it, or they wouldn't have it.
Oh, I'm sure they do, yeah. I meant the additional 24 and 29 and the matching blocks, matching layers. I don't... I don't know.
Well, I know they started Third Ward, is anybody taking... I wrote up half there, and they have it closed right now, and they wanna get ready for the summer.
Yeah, they've cleaned that. Everything is cleaned, I think the last box of wheat supplied. I don't think we have any more boxes.
Yeah, we're done, you know, helping with that portion of it.
So that... The cleanup and teardown must be done. And like I said, they do have 40, almost $42,000 more worth of 300, if you want.
Is it paid for to them?
That is. That is.
How much have we contributed for local time service?
Well, I didn't add, I didn't count that. Basically, I have some boxes. I don't know if you have no idea?
Oh, I had, we did lay them, you know, it was more of, you know, a...
Yeah, what'd they have, like, three boxes?
Five boxes total.
Five boxes. So, you know, it would probably be, I don't know what it was.
You're looking at maybe $300 a piece, $1500 total.
I mean, it wasn't significant, but from our end, we'd rather try to... We'd try to help.
Right. Put all of that down at the end.
Yeah. Oh, no, I'm not saying it doesn't. I'm just saying that, you know, that was something we could... Because we have the boxes.
Such a tough balance. I mean, you know, playgrounds are two, but that path gets used so much.
Yeah.
We have a huge playground that we can heat. Such a big playground. I don't know. I like the light.
That's a tough question. That's why you all are sitting up there and I'm sitting down here.
Well, I don't even think that it's just a matter of liking the lights over. It's not... That money was...
Mark for Lincoln Trail. Yeah, but it wasn't... I don't think the lights were factored in with it.
No.
The lights weren't factored in at the time.
Although, I mean, not to... One side the other, the Jim's made a mention about the fact that it's hard to... Security without lights.
It's hard to see when you're running and cars are coming towards you, you can't see the trail.
Yeah.
There's no markings on the trail or anything.
For me, I just sit in the living room and watch it.
When does the trail close? Like, what?
It doesn't.
It doesn't. And they were talking about maybe the lights leaving on, do the lights on until like 11 or so. And they even talked about leaving them on all night. It was a debate.
Weren't they thinking of solar?
They are solar lights, aren't they?
Yeah.
They're solar lights.
The residents say anything about the lighting that their houses along that trail?
I haven't... I don't know if they have, I don't...
I don't even know if people really know.
I think those who... Any I've talked to would appreciate the light.
Yeah, it's not like... I mean, those lights were gonna sit... They're a 20-foot pole, but they're sitting a little bit down in because they're down by the trail. So they're not... They're probably, what, gonna be, I don't know, five, six feet in certain areas below the road, or four feet below the road. So, I mean, I'm not gonna be really, really that high.
Those who I've spoken to who live along there really like the trail. They like it being...
Yeah, I haven't heard anything negative.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything negative, but the lights going in that would illuminate that area, keep away the potential for any...
Which is why we talked about whether or not it's better to turn them off at 11 o'clock or leave them on all night long, because if you leave one on at 10, it tends to deter people from hanging out there.
Right. And there's only 10 lights. This is not even the first of... There could be other grants, multiple grants down the road, again, requiring matching money. But these are only 10 lights.
So it wouldn't light the whole path?
Yeah. They're gonna be spaced so that, you know, they were evenly spaced throughout the path, but a two-mile path.
It's a start.
Yeah, a two-mile path is like 10...
Right. Or even put them in the heavy populated, like, where there's more traffic, like, from Main Street to James, you know? Something. Either way.
That was a hard debate, I think, so that really is... How their place is really, you know, still...
So it sounds like the consensus is we'd rather use at least the 18,000 and that 25,000 for the lights as opposed to the playground.
And maybe they can use some of the money to make foot markings on the...
On the intersection?
Well, no, on the path itself. This is like right now, in the middle of the night, it's sometimes you're running down the path because the cars are shining, their lights right at you, and you're below Lincoln Avenue.
Yeah, I'm... I don't know. Well, I think, yeah, I think that would detract from the... What it looks like there.
Is that it?
Yeah. Yeah, that's the deal.
And we need lights.
I mean, another alternative too with me is you wanna kind of split the baby. If you wanna throw some money toward Third Ward.
Well, we really... We can give the rest to Third Ward, but...
Well, I'd like to see their top... I don't like the idea... I mean, I know we have losing Keener Park, but I don't like the idea of all some of the lawn kids happen to leave that neighborhood on foot because their parents are at work and they can't get driven down to...
That Third Ward playground gets a lot...
That's what I'm saying. Some of the money's been thrown in there.
Lincoln and crossing, you know, Lincoln Air and crossing all those streets.
Same way we first wore, it needs flooding, too.
I would be concerned, and would wanna ask, if they've started the Third Ward project without the money, why did they start the Third Ward project without enough of a budget? That's a pretty big chunk to not have.
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, it just seems like these projects are constantly scrambling.
I think what happens a lot of times is, I think, they run into things that they don't anticipate. I mean, I know, you've done home improvement projects, you do have a budget, and it... But I don't know. I just don't know.
Yeah, and this is kind of... This kind of morphed into a project from the Athletic Field and not Third Ward. I mean, I don't know. It's kind of like a... Like something they're trying to put a rope around and gather ends. It's gotten kind of ahead of everybody. I mean, I'm not defending or taking sides either way, I'm just saying that it's kind of went in from more athletic... There wasn't gonna be a separate grant for the Third Ward, which would make a move.
Yeah, that's right. We had applied for a grant for Third Ward separately.
Right.
And then, when this all happened, we backed away from the Third Ward grant because we had... Now we had equipment that we didn't have a place for.
Right, they wanted to use the $42,000, $30,000 along with equipment, so I do think the project has kind of snowballed some of the ground.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we just need to have Craig come to the meeting next one June and explain it to us.
I can.
Because both of the... You know, both the Lincoln Avenue Trail and Third Ward are kind of their babies.
Yeah. All I have to say is, we, once the grant's finalized, whatever money we have, you know, in the bank, goes over to the Third Ward because our liability, responsibility, we need to be part of ours. You know, we have to make sure that, you know, the money's transferred to them and our liability ceases. That's mainly...
I'd like to see what they have, plans they have for it, too, and see if there's something to do with that.
Do they need the $25,000 to satisfy the grant?
They would need to be... They would need that, basically, they've got a whole... They've got $30,000. So it happens part of the problem, I think, gets computed. The part of the problem is the... Some of the money they used for the Athletic Field, they would've had to use for the Third Ward. Because they did engineering costs, those costs of about almost $8,000 was disallowed. So they...
Well, maybe we gotta go back to school board and ask for that.
I mean, they started $8,000 in the hole.
Yeah.
Because they had engineering costs for the Athletic Field.
Yeah.
Which can't be transferred over to Third Ward. So, I mean, that's part of the issue.
Okay.
Do you want Craig to come in and discuss it?
We've got a lot of things going on here. We gotta finish one at a time, maybe.
Oh, I... We got... This is a...
Well, part of the problem with that... Part of the problem with that is you got windows of opportunity because you only have so many months of nice weather that they try to get everything, you know?
Now, as far as the... As far as the lights, if you want, I did talk to Chris, and we did forestall that till next year. That's entirely... That's feasible.
See, I was told last...
We're gonna need money, though.
Yeah, we need... But we can bet you the pleasure for next year.
Well, or we might be able to get some help from, you know, Tracca or from... Or the funding cycle for people that have contributed to other projects changes, too. I mean, we have a lot of people that have contributed to Lincoln Trail that you don't wanna go back and ask for money again, and so you're in another...
Well, and then Joe was very helpful. He's got some suggestions of other legislators to bring into the... On the table. There are people that I haven't brought to the table, but they... He has some very good suggestions.
The money's out there, we just gotta tap into it. We just gotta find it. I mean...
All right, well, we'll get Craig to come and talk. And I guess I'll just tell Chris to... We won't lose money, we just forestall it for a year. As far as that, I believe there's money in the budget.
See, I was told... Okay, I don't know when you talked to Chris, but I was told that we already... The window was last Wednesday.
No, I talked to him Thursday or Friday. And I asked him, you know, and he said that the meeting had been canceled, so he was gonna... He was okay waiting until Tuesday Wednesday. Plus, I'm emailing, or I thought...
Well, all this money we're saving, what else are you doing here? Are you gonna be able to afford to vote?
That's a bad one. Let's get to good parts. All right.
So we're not gonna get the lights now?
We don't know yet.
That's up... I mean, I can... That's up to council. I can forestall it, tell Chris to... Tell him to sign for next year?
I'd go for it.
What about the playground?
Well, let's go to the school district and ask for it.
Well, I mean...
Why would they start it if they didn't have them?
Well, I don't know that they don't. I mean, I'm just saying, I don't know. Maybe they wouldn't... They just wouldn't do everything they were gonna do. I don't know. Enough with it, I don't know.
They tore everything out.
They just may not put as much stuff in. I don't... They just may not put as much stuff in. I don't, I have no idea.
Yeah, I mean, most of their, I don't either. I don't know what they could...
My guess is they were, they, my guess is they were counting on this money.
Playground. They would need the, you know, the mulch and the...
But they bought all that and they have 40, they have $41,000 left? Or is that without that money?
No, they spent $41,000 on playgrounds.
On equipment.
They have playgrounds from the sitting there that is ready to go, but they need the base and they're going to have a pavilion. Whatever they're going to have, I don't know.
I could see starting our project and running into something and like missing $5,000 or $10,000, but if you're missing that much money, it seems like you didn't plan accurately.
Well, I think, my guess would be that they planned with that $25,000.
They probably did.
They probably didn't have the authority.
But they didn't even have that.
Maybe they can hold back on pavilion and get that in the future.
Well, no, that's, that's something to, to talk to Craig about. I mean, I just need to know whether or not to tell...
I, I don't know that we can make a decision because we don't really have all the facts. We're sitting here speculating, so we need them to come and tell us. Because this is the first time, and I'm not real happy about it because I've had multiple conversations with, with different people about this and, and this $25,000. Nobody even mentioned using that for the license bill right now, so...
And you're on the board, right?
I missed the last meeting. Yeah, I was out of town, so... That's my fault, though. I missed the meeting. They may have talked, but, but, but I don't know if they've talked about it because they may have assumed I knew that the $25,000 was still sitting here, that they wanted to move that.
Yeah, I mean, I knew that, I knew that Craig knew about it, putting in, like, giving, being, you know, group, being, knowing that $25,000 was there.
Mm-hmm.
And, but, as far as...
When we talked about the light, the last, the last week, the last week, when I emailed Joe and everything, I, I, I didn't know that it was that $25,000 there. And I'm assuming it's because they were, they were counting that $25,000 into what they needed for Third Ward.
Yeah, I believe so.
My guess is, from Park and Rec's perspective, Third Ward is more, that's, I'm, I'm, my guess is, because like I said, I wasn't at the meeting, that, that they think that Third Ward is more important than Lincoln, Lincoln, because it's daylight and...
Well, it's a matter of completing a project.
The track is more heavily used in the daylight as opposed to nighttime, but there's a lot of traffic.
I mean, you know, as far as, as far as Third Ward playground, I'm sure they're probably just going to complete a project.
Yeah.
Lincoln Trail is pretty much done.
It's an ongoing project.
Well, as you're saying...
Well, the light was never part of it.
They can't even plow the, the thing in the wintertime. They can't even sweep the...
And that, I don't think that was ever part of their plan.
I don't think they addressed the maintenance.
They do it down here.
They haven't addressed the maintenance.
I thought they addressed maintenance that meeting when they came to ask us for it. And I remember Joe saying, you know, "Oh, we'll be able to help out with the plowing," but that was part of the thing with the maintenance.
I don't remember that.
I don't remember that either. We don't have the equipment to plow that trail.
No. No, they need a small, like a small piece of, a small plow now.
Like the one they use down here.
Yeah, I don't know what the, what they use down here.
Yeah, they use something. It's always...
Yeah, I don't know what they use. We'll eat on the good stuff. Well, I'll show the next stuff. That one is exactly it. Lincoln, the garbage. I went back and looked at the garbage fees. If we, if council agrees and you decrease, it's $2 across the board, residential, commercial, which means that $24 increase, annual increase for both operators. The, the commercial would be paying for our total, they're paying $312. The residential total will be $264. So, the commercial is paying more. There was confusion last month because I was giving you monthly versus quarter.
Okay, so, what's the increase for residential?
It's $24 a year for all.
Oh, it's $2 for everybody?
For everybody, across the board. $2 a week for the, or $2 a month for the commercial and, what, $6 a quarter for the residential. But it adds up to, same across the board. I mean, the, the bag, for example, commercial's at $222 a year and residential is $204. So, residential still is paying less across the board.
Well, it's unfortunate, then.
Well, what'll happen is if we, if you do the increase at the last quarter of the year, that will help offset the, the next year and the living allowance. That was as close as I could get to, you know, getting it back to zero. And nobody lets me create. Okay. Now, we, we have, for those, everybody should be aware, but we've talked to the unions and police about a change in healthcare. And our change in healthcare, our healthcare was supposed to go up, we had a budget of about $74,000 increase for this year. The first increase that they came across from UPMC, it was $77,000. So, we had figured about 20% increase. It was coming in about $22, whatever.
Let me say that we are still not ACA compliant. We're still grandfathered in.
Yes.
So, this is, this is an increase without having to go into the Affordable Care Act.
Right. And in 18 months from now, we'll have no choice. We'll have to go into, it's a different way to calculate. At that point in time, it may not really hurt us that much, you know, but, anyway. We went back to the union and we said, "Look, we'll increase it deductible, but the city will pay for it. We'll adjust the co-pays and the city will pay for it." And as it turns out, it would end up costing us an extra, we had budget of $74,000, but it should only cost us about $84, $8500. So, we're, it's a, it's a savings to the city of about $66,000.
And so you, that have been around for a while, might remember, we had the same plan a while back where we had a high deductible, but the city pays the deductible, so the employees have to, so, and for their, the, the co-pays increase, but, but we reimburse them for the extra share of the co-pay. So, if the co-pays were $20 and now they're $30, they submit a bill and CB Tracy sends them the reimbursed $10 portion out of it.
Yeah, the only issue is, like you said, they've got to put the money out front and then they get reimbursed. And, and most of the times, like they, they were suggesting, you put it on your credit card. By the time you get the credit card bill, you've already had the payment.
Yeah, but it's not a full reimbursement. It's just a reimbursement for the difference.
Right.
And then, and, and also put the full deductible until they need the deductible.
In a way, the deductibles are, they know that, you know, they, we, they over, they factor them a little heavy that I really think they should, does okay. They, they figured like 40% will be using the deductible. Usually it runs less. It might be a little higher. I forget the exact percentage, but they, they did the higher than what is normal for a lead. So, our overall cost increase...
Maybe less.
Could be less, but it's not going to be where we are. It's still going to, still going to increase. It may not be a significant...
I just want to thank the, the Police Department and the Public Works Department, the people that we met with from Aspen and FOP for, for agreeing to do this. Obviously, we had to meet and discuss because it was a collective agreement, so we thank them for that.
Yeah, it was, it was, we had a committee to put together and it was a good group of people and they were aware of the fact that everybody's tied to the health of one thing in the city and this is a way to continue to have that health of one thing. All right, that was that. Now, next is Mr. Dak in the Real Estate Tax Assessment.
Yes, item eight is settlement of the SG2 Realty Tax Assessment Appeal. I don't know if you guys were aware, but in December of 2015, the school district hired a law firm to file proxy, I think about 15 tax assessment appeals based upon transactions that had occurred in that year. And they thought that the current assessment rates didn't meet the market value of the transaction. In this case, the school district's attorney negotiated with the, the landowner and they came to a settlement agreement to which the county is agreeable with raising the assessment value for the property to be the actual purchase price of the property. I personally believe that that's fair, that they should, that the, their tax assessment value would be the purchase price of an arms-length transaction. So, I would just be presenting, or preparing a resolution if council would like me to, authorizing myself to enter into that agreement for the municipality. It would be filed shortly thereafter and then that would be the tax assessed value.
All righty, next on item eight is the, we have been in, or have been discussing, have been discussing with Jim in Capital, which is the same individuals that did the bonds in 2012. They're local and, you know, they, they had a good relationship with the city in the past. We can reissue these bonds, and I give you a kind of cheat sheet there. You'll see that the very, the, the total savings comes up to $235,956, which is marked number nine on the, on the packet. And essentially, the bonds are issued for the same timeframe. They'll still be finished in 1231, 2034, same timeframe as they are now. It's just the fact that the interest rate has improved again and we've been able to take advantage of it. So, in the first year, you'll save $53,231. In the second year, you're talking $147,000 savings. So, that's going to match the budget, help with the budget. And then the following year, they're $35,000, but...
What was the interest rate before?
Uh, it was 2.7, I think. You know, maybe it can be, can be 2.9, I don't know. Uh, it's, it's, we're, we're saving a significant, yeah, well, actually, in the, in the last part of the term, it goes up to, it went up to 4.125. It's kind of a blended rate.
So, you're saying the total savings is $235,956?
Yeah. I mean, the unbuilt bonds, like I said, in the, the last three years, were paying 4.125% interest. This is a one, something, whatever, two, I guess, whether I could be back to month, 1921, whatever it was, over the entire timeframe, the blended rate.
Okay.
Which is nice. It's an opportunity. I, you know, a few years ago with my prior life, I, we did a bond and it was a eight, eight or nine million dollar offer. This is a true million dollar offer. Our savings at that time was about a quarter of a million. You're saving the same amount on a lot house. So, it's definitely a, makes significant, shows you where the interest rate's born. So, if with council approval, well, actually, I'm hoping the council's comfortable with it because we've already started providing...
I think that's a no-brainer.
Well, you know, I would ask, but we already started providing them our information so you can start working on it because we have to have it finished by August, so we won't have a whole lot of time. All right, last is the 537 resolution.
Well, unfortunately, this is, this last is going to turn into two last ones because I got a letter at about 4:30 today from council for the LM, or LMA. The first item is, at the end of last week, on Thursday or Friday, we were provided with correspondence from Gibson Thomas relative to the Act 537 update that we did earlier this year. In our consent order, an adjudication which was approved by council, there is set forth a timeframe for items to be completed such as mapping, scoping, construction deadlines. I haven't had a chance to dig into it. I, I've made some calls to get more information on this, but my understanding is essentially that DEP wants a separate resolution from council outlining all of the different steps in the plan to be created. Apparently, they also want this to them by July 1st or 3rd, or June 1st or 3rd, which is, which is obviously before the next meeting. I've seen some emails go back and forth suggesting that the various players in here need to request an extension. I'm a little disappointed that we just found out about it today or the day before.
Right.
But, you know, I'm going to see what I can do.
This is the gift that keeps on giving. It just won't go away. I thought we...
Yeah. DEP has a lot of requirements, apparently, so we're...
I mean, Gibson Thomas letter did May 17th. We got it by 19, so it's not like anybody sat on. It's just there was no time.
Yeah, and then the, the attorneys started getting involved today and I just got an email at 4:03 from council for DEP saying that we have to do this. So, I'm hopeful that we can get an extension. I'll learn more the next day or so.
I mean, if not, we'll just have to call a special meeting on March 30th, May 31st to do this.
Yeah, so anything you do, it's, I mean, we have enough time for this meeting, so...
Yeah, I know.
Well, we, we have to advertise it, though. We don't time to advertise it, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
We don't time to advertise it anyway.
I'm optimistic and hopeful that they'll give us the extension because in one of the emails, he said, "I'd like to request for an extension." He was talking to one of the other attorneys. So, I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll get one.
Well, you are not unique. I mean, everybody's going to have the same problem. All the other communities are going to have a problem. Their board meetings are later on next month.
So, that's that. The, the last item is, is, as you'll recall, we approved the consent order and adjudication as well as the cost allocation agreement. Both documents we approved in February. For some reason, no one knows where those documents should be kept. So, we decided that we would just file the documents with the recorder deeds. It's a public document, anyway. That way, the original is kept with...
Which is for the 537 plan?
Yes, both the consent order and adjudication and the cost allocation agreement. I guess no one wants to hold the original.
Okay.
So, everyone said, "Fine, let's just give it to the recorder deeds." So, I'll just be preparing a resolution for council to consider, just filing those original documents at a neutral site, open to the public. And I'm done.
Yeah, so am I.
Jim, do you have something?
Yes, I think John Sli is going to talk to Wayne about the drug task force stuff. Equipment that we buy every year. The city buys equipment every year that we need for drug task forces. It's usually computer equipment. And the, the Attorney General's office reimburses us. And I, I was asked by Wayne through John to present that to council, that, you know, just to rehash it. We do it every year, but...
So, we need an ordinance? What do we need for that? A motion? Just a motion?
I, I think it would be a resolution, but...
We're buying the equipment and the county task force is reimbursing us.
I mean, I, I think a motion would be sufficient, but if, if they want document, you know, documentation proof that you guys passed it, I can, I can prepare it.
I don't think they're asking for a resolution. I don't, they're not really asking for anything but the receipts.
Okay, then...
Let's do a motion. Mike, do you have anything?
No, ma'am.
You've learned from Ann pretty well.
Ah, no, we, we started our line painting. We put up a flag, say, for Memorial Day and start for July and everything.
Did you get your new toy yet?
Uh, you, no, well, we have it.
We have it.
Is this week your operational?
Well, as of right now, I think it is, but we have to do our training. So, we're waiting for Bob, the owner of Golden Equipment, to contact me. We're going to set up a, a training dates, hopefully this week. We can get some of the guys trained and hopefully start this week.
And we have to do the title transfer, too, but they'll, they'll do title transfer, then they'll do training the same day. Yeah, the, the, we received this wire transfer today, so we should be getting our trainings out of there, so...
Anybody at council have anything?
No, I think there's a mailing that went out, the map, you know, and it had your, your letters in it. You know, the, the big...
Yeah, the map.
Yeah.
It was excellent.
And along that, you've got to hand them, all this, everybody, the staff, I mean, not me, everybody else in the staff did a lot of work on that. You know, that's, that's a nice, I think it's a nice representation, to say.
Yeah. Just a reminder that Relate to Life is June 4th and 5th and that we were asked, the city was asked if we would, you know, walk in the lead lap at 10 o'clock on Sunday morning. So, I've extended an invitation to all the members of council as well as all the employees and, and their families. It's Saturday. Did I say Sunday? Saturday at 10 o'clock, I'm sorry. Saturday at 10 o'clock. Saturday, June 4th, at 10 o'clock. So, if, if you can come, just meet down there and they, they invite us all from the city, many of us, of us that can be there to walk the lead lap.
I got ahold of Sam Giraffe about that, the antenna up in the cemetery. They had talked about getting rid of it.
Which cemetery?
The cemetery. Kegel's lease.
Oh.
And he said it would get, get back to me. Because I guess it's not even on our property and we're paying insurance. It's $20 a year. Give me the hit.
Wayne, how about our cap?
We got it.
We got it.
And then we can put it towards...
It's a, it's a CD, basically, a, you know, government equivalent CD.
Are we going to put it towards the garage?
No.
I'd rather not. I would rather, I mean, I, I kind of started and I've got it stalled because it's by the other project, but I'd like to put together a, a, a flyer capital plan. I'll show you. I believe that an HVAC system is on a flatland. Mike wants more toys.
He needs more people.
Well, we're, we're going to be advertising, uh, it's one of, I'm trying, it's going on, I need to pay for it. Going to go, get ready to go and pay for it on Friday, or another employee.
Plus, if I remember correctly, there's a penalty if you pay these things off and...
Yeah, Joe's going to look into that. Joe, we're talking about that, and he was going to give me some information, but, um, we have, I mean, I, I'd like to, obviously, as a, as an accountant, I like to hang on to as much money as I can.
Yeah, well, what's...
But there's a capital program I want to put together for them.
And, and what, what, what do we have right now in the industry fund?
Well, it's, it's almost, it's about quite a million dollars. You know, if they offer the art cap, it's, it's basically, actually, it'd be a little higher than that because we've got the...
I think it's higher than that.
Yeah, we've got money from the property.
With your cap, we had, we probably had $400,000, $500,000 in there.
Well, you got, you got money from the sale of property.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's a couple, well, $400,000, of course, $200,000, so...
Yeah.
I forget about it.
Your cap money, I'll guess there's about $8.4, maybe.
I don't know. It's at least one more, at least one more, so...
Yeah. Um, because we had money in there before we got your cap money.
I'll have to look and see. I don't know how much you had in there.
Because, you know, I mean, we always got to keep some money in there.
Well, the thing is, you know, the simplest thing is like if the compactor goes down.
Right.
Or if the scale goes down, which had, they're both ancient. You know, it's going to, there's going to be a large piece of change in...
Yeah, one of the things that, you know, this might be something that the Public Works Committee can, can, can work on, but one of the things we've talked about repeatedly is trying to figure out if we can kind of look at the transfer station as, as kind of its own business unit to see, you know, how much money does it make allocating? Because I know everybody that works there doesn't just work there.
Right.
So, you have to allocate their, their time between the road, the street crew and the, and the transfer station and...
Yeah, we could look at it.
We talked about trying to make that a self-sustaining, you know, business unit, so to speak, so that we don't take, like, when they're making a lot of money, we tend to take it and use it for other operations and maybe we should be trying to use that money to buy the things that you guys need to, to do what you need to do to keep the transportation profitable.
Well, and there's also some opportunities of just investing, you know, of getting smaller boxes, getting a truck because it's more, more boxes. See, you can start using smaller boxes and, um, there's some opportunities there, but, you know, matter of fact, I know that the, the committee's going to meet with Mike and I on...
31st, sir.
31st, yeah.
But that might be something that, because we've, we've always asked the question, is the transfer station profitable?
Yeah, I think, I think it's fine if it is, but I...
And I, and I think we all agree that it is, but it would sure be nice to know.
The exact figures.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a couple of things we have in common that aren't profitable, like the park and road.
Yeah, I know.
Except for that. The rest, I meant, if they try to replace it, it's possible. We can, we can look and see, you know.
What did we ever do with the study that the score did for that?
Well, they, what they suggested was basically doing more advertisement and we kind of got, like, score took it so far, but they were suggesting we get an intern. Well, we contacted St. Vincent's to get an intern. I've contacted them probably four or five times and we've never gone any further than that. I mean, I didn't talk, talk to score and they tried contacting St. Vincent's. We wanted an intern to come in and help us in marketing. That's probably backwelling with Joe passing and stuff like that. That'll kind of put aside.
The other thing we need to think about going forward, you know, is they broke ground on the Exela Health Latrobe Square. So, I don't know really, I don't think any of us know what impact that's going to have on us. Like the Traumman Building, I don't know if all those doctors are going to move up there or if some of them are going to stay here until they retire and then they're not going to replace them here. And there's going to be, we're going to have to figure out ways to market that downtown space that we're going to lose by losing the doctors out to the new, to the new spot.
Yeah, Exela's not great. I mean, they, they really haven't given you any idea.
Well, I wouldn't say that.
Have they given you idea what to do with the hospital?
The hospital, yeah. The hospital, they, what they say is that the hospital, the part of, part of the reason they're doing what they're doing is to try to keep the hospital closed simply because the, the model that they're using, and, and they, they, they claim it works, is, is it keeps people from, you know, if, if you're primary care physician and you're, and all your tests and your specialist and everybody's in the same building, then they're going to, they're going to do, they'll have more referrals, they believe, to, to Latrobe Hospital. As, as opposed to you going to your primary care physician and he says you really need to see an orthopedist and then you go home and you start looking for orthopedists and you end up in Pittsburgh. You know, this way, they're, and, and they also believe that because they're going to have a safety off, off, off facility that they will be able to attract, and they already have done that. They have some, you know, some, some really first-class doctors there now and, in, in the area and, and they believe that a large part of that is because of this, this new upgrade that they're doing, so...
I'm going to go and run with the facility. They've done a, put a lot of money into the hospital.
Yeah, and they said that, um, they, they anticipate, because I went to the, to the groundbreaking last week and they anticipate seeing 500 patients a day. And people that have gone to the Norwin, Norwin One, they love it.
Yeah, very busy.
And they say it's wonderful. And so now, so now you're dealing with your primary care physician and your specialist is affiliated with Exela and you're more inclined to stay in the Exela Health work, network as opposed to going to Pittsburgh. So, they, they believe that this will help sustain and grow Latrobe Hospital.
It's an asset. It's a valid asset. They could, they could have any problem with it.
Yeah, so, hope, I mean, hopefully, but, um, so, we'll see. Yeah, so, I mean, hopefully, but, so we'll see.
Good question. Truck. Have we ordered the truck yet or...
Not yet. We're, we're, that's next on the, I was waiting to get the, I won't say the, I was waiting to get the...
Street sweeper?
Once we've got that, I just got today notified that the money got transferred. Now, we're looking at, Mike and I have talked about 550s and looking at, now, you guys have been talking about it, you know, at the, at the, I've heard of all the committees for the public safety, I believe.
And Eric?
Public Works, Public Safety.
Yeah, I always forget it, I don't want to get it.
I know, I don't.
Anyway, you'll, you'll, you'll see that we have 95s up there and they need to be replaced.
What, um, how, what's the lead time? How soon do you have to get it ordered so that that's, that's what you have to worry about?
You know, roughly six to, six to seven months.
So you need to get that ordered, so we have it for now.
Didn't I say this two months ago? We'll do this first. Usually, the, the chassis for the truck, you buy immediately, there's no wait time on the chassis, they're ready to go. Whenever, whoever the lowest bidder is for the outfitting, depends on how busy they are at the time of the year, how many trucks they're, you know, dealing with, will result in how long it takes, so...
Did you get through the first couple of months with what you got? Do you have a map this new place?
Yeah, usually, you know, November, October, November, December, usually been, been mounted, yeah. You know, we, we haven't for the past couple of years salted at all during those months, so...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, but once January 1st comes, seems like that's a different story.
Now, we can come back out while?
Right, you know, I...
I mean, once we, once we complete that, we can now, we can, we can, we can, we can get to the bigger one, we can get to smaller 550s. So again, we'll be talking to council about...
This is the kind of stuff, Tricia, that we need to do, because we haven't bought one for, what, 30 years?
You're talking 95s.
20 years. That's part of the, that's what, some of the things we need to do with, with some of that York Cap money, which is what...
Right, well, so I, I, I did talk to Mike about giving him provided information. It would, it would be nice to have a five-year capital plan.
Yes.
And I, I can honestly say that if I had the opportunity, I could have had it already. I just haven't had the opportunity to put together.
And one thing, Rosie, we did the unveiling of Joe Bushway the other day.
Yeah, I apologize for not being there. I, I could not get out of work. I tried.
It was a nice, nice attempt.
It was very nice.
I heard truly good things about it.
He worked on that, very good job.
Yeah. I mean, it was, you saw the wind helped us take the bag off.
Did you?
I heard that was bad.
Yeah, it probably was.
I had a meeting with the union and I tried to get out, but there was just no way.
Yeah, nice, there was probably 40...
I heard there was a nice, nice turnout.
Yeah, it was very nice, very nice. And I think that Diane really appreciated it.
That's good.
We don't allow signs along Lincoln Avenue, like, um, political signs.
We've never had anything in writing for that.
Well, I had three, well, a friend of mine had three signs taken last, a couple Saturdays ago.
Well, they wouldn't have been taken by you guys.
No.
No.
I found...
We got, we got them back for them.
A man who thinks he owns...
Well...
I think the issue is the right of way. How far the right of way extends. We, you can put signs by ordinance in the right of way. The problem is to get them over too far in the grass and not in the right of way anymore. And, but, I mean, the trail, it owns, from the center to trail over 15 feet each way. That's all this, um...
That's not a lot.
That's 30, I mean, that's how the road is, that's...
30, yeah.
Yeah, so it's 30 feet. So I mean, now, I want you, the trail kind of winds a little bit, it's kind of hard to get to the exact line.
I personally wish that the whole United States would have a sign. I hate them, period, everywhere. Because think of the level playing field if no one put them up. But that's not going to happen, so, um...
Yeah, I think, the issue is where they're located. Obviously, if they're, they're within that 15 foot on the center, they're on private property and they're not allowed to be there.
All righty then.
We got it back.
Yeah.
No, they were not. I forget what they, that was like...
Something like Discover Christ.
Oh, no, okay.
Yeah, they really know that series.
Well, that's, that's, so anybody can put any sign anywhere.
Why not?
Well...
Well, I'm asking the question.
Political signs are allowed 30 days before and a week, is that right?
35 days.
Yeah.
And, okay, and a week after. Right of way signs, Joe used to pick them up all the time, so I'm not really sure...
I'm not sure we're, we're allowed to do that. I thought you were talking about political signs.
Yeah, I don't think those signs can be there in general. But, though, political signs are the take now.
Yes. Oh, yeah. How about the signs for daycare and dog grooming and stuff that's...
They're not allowed.
They shouldn't be there.
Unless they're on private property.
Yeah, they can be on private property.
Like if somebody has it in their yard. I saw somebody today was advertising for cleaning up pet poop.
I saw that.
Did you see that?
Yeah, Megan says she knows who that is. It's not the people that live there.
I don't know, but it's...
It must come and do their yard.
It's in, it's in a private yard, so that's okay, but, but, I mean...
Yeah, I know, and political signs, they can say it's 35 days, but I'm not sure on advertising signs.
No, the advertising, but...
I mean, it's, it comes under that...
It's a shame in the country we live in.
Where do you draw the line? That's the question.
I guess whatever that folks us. There's a, a lot of exemptions in here, but can't be on the public right of way, so...
Oh, it can't be on the public right of way?
Signs directed within or projected onto the lights, the lines of a public sidewalk or streetwise right of way, unless approved by council.
What about, um...
Well, it's like the banner, we had to approve that.
Yeah, we had to approve the banner.
Yeah, well, that's different.
Yeah, 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 but, um...
So no political signs will be up along Lincoln Avenue.
They shouldn't until September 4th.
There's an exemption for political signs, correct?
Yeah, 35 days before 7th.
Yes.
Yeah.
All righty then.
All right.